Okay, we'll call the meeting over. We'll have a prayer and a pledge led by Councilmember Fish.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we just come before you tonight thankful and humbled by this week. Coming into Easter week, Lord, we thank you for the sacrifice that you made for each and every one of us, Lord. I pray that as we continue through this meeting that your presence would just be filled in this place tonight, God, that the decisions made in this room would be what was best for our city, what is best for God or Kansas and for a place that we all love so much, Lord. I pray that you would just watch over us and fill this place with your presence. It's in your gracious name we pray. Amen.
Item C, approval of the agenda. Do we need to amend the agenda at all or are we happy with how it looks like?
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion by Brent.
Second.
Second by Sarah. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item B, citizen comments. Is there anybody from the audience that would like to say a few words?
Hello.
We're just gonna come up here together, just get what we're talking about today.
My name's Amanda, I'm with the Goddard Lions Club.
My name's Samantha, Goddard Lions Club as well.
So we wanted to give you an update on our car show and Easter egg hunt and show our appreciation for you guys helping, partnering with us in out of this. So the first thing, we're gonna talk about the car show.
So last year was the first year we had a spring car show and we had 140 cars registered then. And this year we had over 200. So we are growing the event very nicely. So thank you for your support for that and we're looking forward to doing that.
And the extra bathrooms were great. That was a good improvement over last year. We do have a survey out to everybody that attended and it's on social media. So once we get those results back, we'll be happy to share that. Just looking at some of them, we have, I think, over 30 that has already done the survey. I noticed that there was a lot of people that were new to the community that was coming in for the car show. So we brought a lot of people into Goddard. And there was a lot of comments that they loved the small town feel, they loved the people, they loved the community. So I was really happy to see that from some of the comments as well. Thank you. As far as the Easter egg hunt, so just a little bit of background. 2017 was the last time that the Easter egg hunt was done in Goddard and it was done by the Activities Committee. And that year it was disbanded. Last year I had saw comments around Easter that some people were missing the Easter egg hunt. I had mentioned that the Goddard Lions Club, they did it before. So I brought it up to the Goddard Lions Club so we could bring it back. And it worked out perfectly because it was very close to the car show and we normally do a kids zone. So we were very ambitious. We're like, oh, I want to just do that Easter egg hunt with that. So we were very ambitious, but we did not anticipate the turnout that we had. So things didn't go quite as planned. We are getting that feedback. We're open to that feedback. And we're already brainstorming to come up with ideas for next year. Next year, due to the date and how it falls, it will not be part of the car show. And we're hoping to take it back to the ball fields where we can easily separate the age groups and avoid the confusion.
Have more space.
Have more space, have its own audio. That was one of the struggles that we had down at the park was the sound. So we're really looking forward to it. In the years past, we had a couple hundred kids. This year we estimate about 600 that we had. So that was 2,400 eggs with 600 kids. So definitely underestimated that. And 40 golden eggs, but I think overall the kids loved it. The golden eggs, they had a price anywhere from a dollar to $25 worth of a gift or item.
And I think the turnout was attributed to having other events as well. But the fact that everybody wanted it back, they've been wanting it back for years.
Yeah, yeah. And from a look at the comments, we are getting the feedback. But what I'm really proud of is that our community is being very gracious with us and really being nice. That even though it didn't go as planned, they're still acknowledging that we brought this back, that it was a lot of hard work for us to do. We were doing it unlimited volunteer support and help. So if anybody's interested in joining the Lions Club, we are taking applications. We would love for you guys to be a part of it and join us because we would like to do more events like this and do more things for the community. And then we have 651 people interested on the Facebook event page. So that kind of just showed you the response that we had. So it was really great for our community. I think a lot of people really enjoyed it and loved being at Goddard.
That was a good problem to have, too many people.
Yes, exactly. So I want to take the time, just a minute, to thank some specific people at departments. Micah, thank you for the continued communication with the Lions Club. We really appreciate you and the fact that you always seem to know what's going on with everything and come to you. And you can get us to the right person if necessary.
I'd have to help.
And then Brooke, this year, on top of what you guys normally do in your maintenance department, I asked you, of course, to help us with getting the porta potty set and sweeping the streets and stuff like that. So thank you for getting that taken care of. I very much appreciate that.
It's our pleasure.
Thank you. And then where did, oh, Chief Bagley, right there in front of me. Thank you for getting the barricades and all of that set up. We did have, well, the maintenance department would take care of that too. But we did have a medical emergency, a spectator had a medical emergency at the car show. So the officers that were on duty did respond to that very quickly. We got EMS out there very fast and that gentleman was transported to the hospital. He's doing okay, but thank you for taking care of that kind of stuff. We definitely appreciate the department. Keaton, thank you so much for coming out. This guy showed up and walked in the community center and said, what can I do? How can I help? So we appreciate you not only coming out and, you know, coming to meet everyone and stuff like that, but really coming out and saying, how can I help you and what do I need to do?
Thank you so much. You guys did an incredible job. Thank you guys for representing Goddard so well. We appreciate it.
Thank you. We do have something.
So I don't know if anybody really knew, but our Easter egg hunt. So we wanted to give you this.
Thank you so much.
You had to tell us.
Keep it right here.
I know they're watching.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that.
Let me see.
But that has our Goddard Lions Club logo.
We gave him the only copy, so no blackmail.
I was gonna say, I guess.
The Goddard Lions Club logo and the City of Goddard logo.
Switch that up for my picture.
Thank you for your kindness.
Thank you guys. I appreciate it.
And then last but not least, thank you to the council and all of you guys for supporting us and allowing this event to happen. So we are already looking forward to next year and your continued support. Appreciate it.
And thank you for the, what was the guy's name for the city? Was that with electricity?
Well, that was Brooke as well.
I know, but there's the other guy. Whoa.
Sean.
Sean.
Sean, Sean's excellent.
Yes, he was awesome with the bounce houses and stuff, making sure we had the proper electricity and all of that type of stuff. So thank you so much. We really appreciate it.
Thank you guys so much.
Thank you guys. Thank you Lions Club and ladies for organizing that.
We see more events like that.
Yeah, it was awesome.
Awesome.
I don't think we were expecting how good it was. And if we were all blown away.
I was there early and there was a ton of people. I was packed. I mean, I was there before all the cars got there.
Yeah, yeah. Very cool. Well, is there anybody else that'd like to come up and speak?
I'm Hanae Gloria Bergnick. I live at 312 South Elm here in Goddard. I just wanted to know if there would be any chance of updating some of the equipment over at Means Park on the playground. You guys are doing a wonderful job in Lander Park. But I was sitting there today with my granddaughter and just kind of surveying the area. And it would be nice to have the child adult swing that you have over here in Lander Park. And then maybe a different jungle gym of some kind. You have a small one over there, but I'm thinking during the summer when the kids are at the pool and they're waiting to get in or after they've gotten out, they might want to play on some equipment over there. And I noticed that there's one barbecue grill over there in one of the buildings over there, but there's not one in the other one. And I thought maybe people might want to use the grill. I'm sure they use the other one because we've used it before. So, but I just thought maybe if you guys could possibly update that side of the park a little bit.
Okay.
Because we use it a lot.
Okay.
Thank you.
Brooke, can you make another that?
Absolutely. It's one good right now. Perfect.
Anybody else? Go on once, go on twice, sold. Okay. And move on to item here. We're gonna let Hawkins Lane individuals come and speak for the agenda item, right?
No. They're not. This is just a receiving discussion item.
Okay, would you guys that are here for Hawkins Lane like to come up and talk about it?
Okay.
No, not here.
Okay, we just want to give you, I just want to make sure.
We didn't want to put them on the spot.
Well, yeah, I'm not trying to pick on the spot. But we get to the agenda item, you won't get to speak then. So I wanted to make sure you guys were aware of that.
We're sharing the information.
Okay, well, awesome. Cool.
Okay, we'll move on to item F, consent agenda. You guys have any questions, amendments, or camp favor?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Sarah, second by Brent. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Item H1.
Make it so good, okay? To the best of my ability. This is item H1, Almera Mayor and City Council. This is the Main Street Farmers Market Sound Waiver and Street Closure. So a quick background, the Chamber of Commerce, in conjunction with the city, would like to host a farmers market on Main Street every second Sunday starting June and ending in September. This event will be from 2:00 PM to 5:00 PM. The event is intended to run every year. The intent of the farmers market is to stimulate activity on Main Street to foster local business growth and encourage out of city residents to spend dollars within corporate city limits. This coupled with fostering sense of local community and social engagement for all individuals. Street closures require an application which is generally approved by the city council. Sound waivers for amplified sound must be approved by city council. There may not be sound application at the same at the farmers market, but in the event it was decided to be introduced at a later time, the sound waiver could be in effect. So we just mentioned that it's good to probably do a sound waiver now as opposed to say, hey, we want to bring a band in last minute and then try to rush a sound waiver through at the last minute. So it's good just to consider a sound waiver now. If approved, the application sound waiver shall run in perpetuity until the city council decides to pass an ordinance to remove the farmers market or change event time and/or place. And so this is gonna run concurrently every year. So if you approve it today, then you don't have to approve it next year or the year after, the year after that, or a year after that, unless you decide that the farmers market, you want to disband it or move it to a different location, in which case you can do so. So this analysis comes out of chapter 13, article 2, and chapter 11, article 13. So chapter 11, 13 reads as follows. No person in open space or within a structure, whether a public or private property, shall operate or permit the operation of any sound application system so that the sound is plainly audible at a distance of 150 feet or more from the sound application center. The system was used in unauthorized, no exception would that be, in unauthorized public activities such as parades, fireworks, et cetera, and approved by the governing body of the city or the department of the city of Goddard authorized to grant such an approval. And chapter 13 dash 209, no person shall be authorized to temporarily close or render in proportion to any sidewalk or street right of way temporarily passed without prior permission of the city administrator. He shall grant such permission in accordance with and subject to any conditions required by a temporary road closure policy and event mandate, which policy may from time to time be announced and amended by the city administrator with the consent of the governing body of the city. Now granted, the road closure policy inside of it, when you look at that, you go, well, can we just approve it administratively within the city with the city staff? You actually look at the road closure policy and say that, oh, road closure shall come before the governing body anyway. So it kind of becomes redundant. So it's good just to bring it before the governing body anyway. And that way it provides maximum transparency. And that way anybody who is viewing this event can say, oh, I'm that business who may be impacted. It's good for me to be aware of that. So this map shows what the road closure would look like. You have Santa Fe, First Avenue, Second Avenue. The street closure would be on this northern end of Second Avenue. It'd be over here on the northern end of Lander Park, right here on the southern end of Santa Fe. And then there would be a closure here so that people can go up cedar as opposed to coming down through the alley. This is the one way anyway. So this is what the general closure would look like. It has been reviewed by Brooke Vanrood, Pub Works Director, and Lance Beasley of the Police Department for any concerns, and they have raised none. There is small publication cost. Legally, it's approved as a form. It is recommended that the council both waive the reading of the ordinance with voice motion and approve the waiver for sound ordinance for the Main Street Farmers Market and approve the street closure with motion plus a roll call. By this point, if there are any questions, comments, concerns, feel free to ask them.
Any questions? We'll have a motion to waive the reading.
I make a motion to waive the reading.
Motion by Brent.
Second.
Second by Sarah. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Make a motion to approve the waiver for the sound ordinance for the Chamber of Commerce, Main Street Farmers Market, and approve the road closure application.
Got a motion by Sarah.
Second.
Second by Brent. Roll call.
Councilmember Fish?
Yes.
Councilmember Lena?
Yes.
Mayor Larkin?
Yes.
Councilmember Tyler?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Can I be ordinance number 920?
Thank you very much. This is item H point 2. So this is a discussion around administrative fees on temporary notes. So a quick background, developers submit petitions for improvements within city limits. And these conditions are for consideration by the city to finance improvements through temporary note bonds that are later turned into permanent financing in the form of special assessments. These petitions are signed by developers stating that they are okay if these costs being assessed to their properties for tax purposes was later to be taken over by homeowners. The petitions come with an administrative fee and engineering fees calculated into cost. When the project costs come in under the proposed petition, additional funds will be towards retiring the notes. The city is looking at keeping the 5% administrative fee from the temporary notes to offset the cost, administrative costs incurred by city staff for new project coming to the city. It reduces the at-large cost that is incurred by the city. This is reviewed with law counsel as acceptable and used by the cities around the central county. This item is a discussion item. If agreed upon by the city council, the city will begin the process of amending the subdivision regulations starting with a public notice in the city newspaper. So in discussion with attorneys, and I met with three of them, this was back in 2022, they decided that the best place to do an amendment for something like an administrative fee would be in the subdivision regulations. To amend the subdivision regulations, we have to publish it first in the city newspaper, allow 20 days to lapse, take the planning commission, and then take it to city council after that, and then publish an ordinance stating that the amendment's taken effect 30 days later. And so since that's the best place to put it, according to attorneys, then that would be the consideration. So the first step would be that if you were okay with this idea, we would then do a public notice that would be published in the city newspaper on Thursday. And then we would allow 20 days, then take a planning commission, and then take it to council after that. So the city council is looking at adopting an ordinance to collect a 5% administrative fee for projects that are financed through bonds. If the city council is in favor of this, the city staff will publish a notice in the city newspaper and begin the process of changing the subdivision regulations to include administrative fee for bond issued improvements. The 5% administrative fee will be collected by a city deposit with a general fund to offset costs incurred by the city for project management. This fee would not increase the petition amount, so the developer would be aware what he's looking at. It doesn't actually increase the petition amount. It's just saying that we're gonna collect a portion of it instead of just using it to pay off the bonds faster. We just collect that and keep it. Developers see, improve all petitions such that the total costs are not inhibiting the marketability of developments. This is key. Every petition comes with a signature by the developer saying that they're okay with this cost. We're not actually increasing petition costs. We're simply saying that we're gonna collect and keep a portion of it. A draft ordinance has been attached, so you can actually see a draft ordinance, what it'll look like in the future, but you're not actually active with anything now. This is just receive and file. Any questions, comments, or thoughts on that?
Okay, so say we need a $100,000 bond, whatever.
It's a very cheap bond.
Well, I'm using small numbers here. I'm gonna, actually, I'm gonna change it to 100.
Hundred billions.
$100. So $5 goes to the city. $95 goes to pay for the project.
Yeah, you can say it that way.
Okay.
It's very general.
So how do we, how are we not making the temp notes higher to cover the full cost of the project?
So a temp note, when they submit it, they submit it with, and actually you can see it on this one. Here's one that we got for Arbor Creek that you guys saw pretty recently. You can see in here that you have the construction cost, which totaled down here. And then you have a 5% on top of that. So here's all the construction cost plus a 5%. This is the total construction cost right here of $72,000. They add a 35% engineering, administration, et cetera, on top of that, at $25,000 on top, for the total amount being $97,000. All we're doing is saying that instead of making it an arbitrary 35% for engineer and administration, et cetera, we're gonna say, hey, please define a 5% in there, have a 30% for engineer and administration, et cetera, and the cost is still the same. Does that make sense a little bit more?
That does. Thank you.
And this cost is gonna be a 5% of the actual construction cost. This is something that, you know, guys feel free to come slap it at any time. But basically, we're saying that if the total cost is a million, there's gonna be a 5% on top of that. If the cost come in less than that, and the construction comes in at $800,000, it'll be 5% of the $800,000. It has to be real construction cost. It can't just be that we're gonna keep it no matter what. So if it's a million dollars and the developer's like, yeah, it's gonna be a million, then we're gonna get our 5% no matter what, because that cost is already included. But if it's $800,000, we're saying it's 5% of the $800,000. And then the remainder just goes to paying off the bonds faster.
So we're basically just breaking out part of a fee that's already there.
Yes, right.
Okay. Gotcha.
Did I mess that up? Anything? So small publication cost, and legally we approve that for the small publication cost would be the public notice in the city newspaper on Thursday, if you guys want to move it forward back. It is recommended that the city council authorize the city staff to publish a notice in the city newspaper and get the necessary steps to amending all necessary forms and documents. They include administrative fee for bond issued improvements. But at this point, there's no ordinance or anything like that because we have to take them, like I said, through the necessary steps to amend the subdivision regulations. We do have the attorneys here. We do have Harlan Porter, the city engineer. We do have Matt, city treasurer. If you guys have any thoughts, concerns, comments. 5% is the maximum. I'm correct. 5% would be the maximum that we can actually charge legally speaking, so.
I guess just to throw this comment out there, any developer that comes into Goddard wanting to build homes already has agreed to that 5%. So they're already aware of it and they'll know about it. So it's not like.
So it's already a fee there. It's just we're now saying, no, we're changing the wording and saying it's ours.
That's right. We're just saying, we're instead of using that 5%, that we normally use it to pay back the bonds faster. We just say, we're gonna keep it for cost incurred, for staff, for bond attorneys, for engineering, for anything else. We're just simply saying, instead of the city at large paying that out of the general fund, we're gonna take that and help offset the long-term cost. Sure.
I think in order to help kind of professionalize our process and developments that I keep talking about, how we're gonna go in the future, I think this is a good step. Having that as part of our process, so it can help us head for some of these costs, like engineering and things.
You guys have any more questions? No? Do I have a motion? I'll make the motion. Motion by Audrey.
Second.
Second by Keaton. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Okay.
Very good. This will be published on Thursday, so we'll send it out and then we'll start the process. This is item H point 3, petitions for annexation and cost share for South Hawkins Lane. So this might be a little misleading. This says petitions, but this is just a discussion about petitions. We don't actually have petitions yet, so this is just to clarify that. This is a discussion item. Not so quick background, so South Hawkins Lane is a major entry point into Tenganika Wildlife Park, TWP. The road has traveled by thousands of cars every year as they visit significant local attractions within the city. City staff is reviewing the possibility of paving South Hawkins Lane as this road is currently dirt, produces significant dust during the warmer months, and serves as a representation of the city for visitors. In order to pave and maintain the road, the city would need to annex the road within city limits. However, state law requires the city to annex any properties that open onto the road. So we pulled this from the Kansas League Municipality's Manual Concerning Annexation Powers and gives the city's general edition pages 2 dash 6. So I'm gonna read it verbatim. The effect of this restriction as a state law is to prohibit the city from annexing a strip of land that serves only as a right of way and then using that strip as a basis for subsequent annexation. So instead of the city just annexing a long strip and then we just kind of keep annexing and create an empty square, you know, basically, off the roads, just annexing all the roads and all the right of ways and just saying, we're gonna annex the rest of it in the future, the state's saying, we're gonna stop cities from doing that. So long strips of right of way, highways, arterios, roads. It prohibits that without annexing the properties actually above them. So there are currently three properties that are not in city limits that are empty on the South Hawkins Lane. Letters were sent out to these property owners, representation of the city, went to the properties, knocked on the doors, visited with the residences that are home and the home is accessible. If the three property owners consent to annexation, the city will annex the properties in the budding road. After which, the city will have a bond. The council will draft a petition to be signed by Matt Faust, Tenganika Wildlife Park, to assess 50% of the cost of paving South Hawkins Lane to Tenganika Wildlife Park and remaining 50% paid by temporary notes. City council reviewing the possibility of annexing and paving South Hawkins Lane. The city is attempting contact three property owners with letters and phone calls. Annexation requirements are dictated by Kansas State Law, KSA 12520. And we will continue to work with the properties. There's some lumber already around. So at this point, this is the map showing pink being the city current limits. These are the three properties that are outside of city limits. We would have to annex all three of them to annex this strip of land right here to actually get paved for long-term annexation, maintenance, and construction. Financially, none of annexation requirements outline KSA 12520F. It is recommended the city council receive and file. We're not actually doing anything right now. This is just a discussion, so.
So I guess I'll start off with a story about finding how all of this started. Before I was even on the council, Hawkins Lane has always been a discussion. It went back and forth between the city, the county. It wasn't a city at one point. Do you know what year that was?
Sure.
Wasn't a city, then it went back to the county, and that's where it's at right now. Tenganika's an attraction here in Goddard and it brings a lot of people in. The road could be paved. And the heartburn that I think that the neighbors have had in the past is we don't want to be annexed into the city of Goddard and it costs us more money. And our property taxes go up. And so I approached Matt and talked to Matt about it. And they're willing to pay 50% of the road or bond it out. And then the, but then when it comes to the neighbors, we neutralize everything. We don't increase their property taxes. We don't assess them, any cost of the road, nothing. And so it's as if they're, they still have.
Frozen in time.
It's frozen in time. And that would be made very clear in the agreement with the neighbors as well that there will be no cost going onto them. This is a project that Tenganika has been wanting and would be good for the city so people don't have to drive on the bumpy road. And I guess as of right now, we need to know how the neighbors think and if they're willing to come into the city of Goddard with no cost onto them and if they want that road paved or not, so.
So currently, water and sewer are, what do they have?
I would guess that most of them have either lagoon, septic, and water wells.
Okay.
Because we don't service.
So it's not a county service and it's not a city service?
It's not real water district. It's not a city.
Okay.
I could be wrong, but I'm pretty sure most of them have a lagoon and septic and so, and water wells.
Tell us, are you guys looking? Are you guys like one?
Yeah.
That's great.
It's a fair guess. It's a fair guess.
Okay, because that's kind of one of the concerns that came up in the past was, well, if we annex them, then at some point, when do we provide them water, sewer? Do we allow them to stay on lagoon? What do we do?
Yeah, so a private annexation agreement allows for a lot of provisions in there, so there's a lot of flexibility. We could annex them and say, hey, if you guys want to keep everything you have, keep your water wells, keep your septic, keep anything else that you have, you can do that. And just simply say, we're not gonna provide you city water and city sewer if you're willing to be annexed into.
Without paying additional taxes.
Without paying additional taxes. It'd be tax rate neutral.
Right.
Yeah, and then we won't assess them any of the costs as mentioned. Costs will be carried through the temp note process and the 50% of it will be special assessed to Tenganika Wildlife Park.
In talking with the county, the county wasn't willing to contribute anything without assessing it to the neighbors. And so to me, that wasn't an option. I didn't want the county involved if they were gonna contribute something and then make the neighbors pay for it. Because the real person or organization that's requesting this is Tenganika. So they have accepted half of the construction cost to be assessed to them. And so that would be the next agreement that we would have to have. But we, before we do that, we would need to have a thumbs up from the neighbors saying, we're okay with the road going.
We would need 100% of that.
Right, and that's my thing, because I, I want to work with Tenganika, but I want the neighbors to be happy because it's your, it's your road. It's where you guys live. You're there every day. I go to Tenganika four times a year. I don't drive that road every day.
I'm kind of lost though. We gave, or we traded some land with Tenganika? And now they have land that goes all the way to 199. So why haven't they thought of putting a road across that?
So I did speak with Matt Faust about that. And the question came up, since we swapped land with them, that land is actually ours with the substation on it, that electrical substation, and that land is ours. We did give them an easement, a right-of-way easement that goes all the way to 199 so that they could pave. And I do believe Matt Faust does want to pave that from 199 into Tenganika. But I believe from what I understand, he doesn't want to make that be the primary entrance. That it would still be Hawkins Lane would be the primary entrance. And so regardless, if in the future, let's say that 199 did become the primary entrance, Hawkins Lane would still be used to get access into Tenganika. And so at some point, I guess the consideration would be that is paving it as a representation of the city beneficial in that way? Because at some point, yeah, there will be a paved road that goes from 199 into Tenganika, but it's still Hawkins Lane is still going to be utilized.
That's pretty, that's pretty long for an entrance to go all the way to 199. That's, that's a lot longer than that little split. You know what I mean? As far as paving from 199 all the way into Tenganika, that just seems.
Yeah, well, it saves all the neighbor problems though.
I mean, there's, I was going to say, there's a couple of different houses I hear that we then have to address, I think, I would assume.
Well, so we have a few hoops we have to do. One, we have to get approval by the neighbors. Two, we have to have a petition agreement with Tenganika. And then three, you guys, we all as a council have to vote on that project because Matt is working on doing a million and a half dollar bond. And so this is going to be one project out of the a la carte selection that the council will be able to pick from. So there's three steps in this process that we have to do. But first, we don't want to proceed going forward if the neighbors don't want it because we don't want to pave a road that we can't manage.
Right.
Well, and we don't want to spend all the time and energy going through all those steps if the neighbors don't want the road, don't want to go forward with it and annex it and have the road.
As mentioned, we need 100% of them, so all of them have to be. Because we have to annex on both sides of the road.
How, how many of these properties are represented in this road? I'm just curious.
Two of us are. So what's the process for getting approval or denial from the homeowners?
Well, we just have a discussion. I spoke with some of them already and there's, they're interested, but it goes back and forth. They want to know exactly what that looks like.
Right.
And they want to know with the long, you know, can they keep everything, you know? And that question is obviously some of them might be minimal to it, some of them might not. And it really just depends on that discussion and what those property owners.
My, I guess my question is, is how does that play out legally or according to the petition or the agreements? Is it with the property owners? But because if they were to sell one of the properties, does it carry on to the next owner? Or would we have to write that, I mean, what does that look like?
I'm not quite sure what that looks like.
I'm going to, can I jump in? I spoke with Robert. This has come up before about, I spoke with Robert Poliquinol about that. We actually had some annexations that were sent in our file to be processed. And before we processed them, the property owners changed. And according to Robert Poliquinol, they became void at that point. So if we annex those properties now according to the property owners and then they sell it, it's still annexed. But if we're discussing this and we get a signed agreement and we never process it and then they sell the property and then we bring it forward for acceptance, it's void.
Okay, but what happens with an agreement with the current property owners every, here in five years? Let's say they agree and then the property changes hands. What about the water that Sarah brings up?
Does it, does it stay with the property or does it change with the homeowner?
We could address that in the annexation petition, I would imagine. We could actually draft that, that they will be allowed to keep as long as they want with their property owners in heirs unless it's sell, unless they sell the property. Then we could say that at that point, it triggers, you know, the response for us to actually provide the city sewer and city water.
And taxes.
Where the property lies right now in conjunction with the existing road? Is there an easement that's going to be, that's going to hinder this property?
Right now, there's no easements or anything of that nature. This is a right-of-way. So this blue line right here is the right-of-way. And then this is the property over here. This dash line is the city limits. And here's this property here and this property here.
So if we pave that road, is there, is there an easement that's going to 10 or 15 feet, whatever that is?
Easements are for.
Does that go on to infringe on their property?
No, we would put city sewer and city water probably in the right-of-way unless we do something differently. And that's kind of more of an engineering question if we were going to do city sewer and city water down the road. But the paving would be in the city right-of-way. We don't need additional easement because this is public right-of-way right here. Does that make sense? So that would just be for the road. If you're talking about city sewer and city water, typically we do run water in the right-of-way here. Sewer is typically in the back, but in this case, we could talk about if we wanted to put sewer in the front for the right-of-way. There'd be no additional easement. They would just be tapping city sewer and city water in the front. But that, we'd have to engineer that down the road. Right now, there's no engineering for how will we bring city sewer and city water. The assumption is just from conversation that I've had with the property owners that they want to keep early fields and water wells. So we're not actually going to spend the cost for designing and engineering for something that we're not going to initiate for another maybe five, maybe 10 years, depends on.
And was that the biggest concern from the property owners that you talked to? Just this, the sewage and water well?
No.
Or what were some of the other concerns?
Some of the concerns would be, of course, taxes. But I mentioned that if they'd be neutral, well, what does that look like? Well, neutral means they'd come in at the current rate and then we would change everything. They wouldn't get more. Questions of are they allowed to keep kind of their, their lifestyle? For example, like if they have, I don't know, llamas or something floating around in the backyard? Yeah, you can keep your llamas. There's nothing that would prohibit that. You know, we're not going to, we're not going to enforce some of the typical code violations like you would. For example, if they had boats and RVs parked in their driveway, we're not going to tell them to move their boats and RVs. We would allow them to keep their lifestyle sort of as, as Councilman Willian said, locked in time. We would lock them in time for that agreement. And then as mentioned, if they, as Mayor Larkin said, if they sold the property, we could say that this contract is null and void unless we put special legal provisions in there that, that Ryan Peck could address and Morris Lenken handle. If you wanted to extend it for any type of special circumstances.
100 years.
I guess the biggest, the biggest hurdle that we've had in the past is getting municipalities on board. County not messing with us when it comes to this. And then also having the council that is willing to have the discussion of pretty much neutralizing everything, locking them in time.
Right.
Because that's, what I have heard has been the biggest concern. Is this going to cost the neighbors any additional costs?
Right.
Or, or inhibit a future sale because it becomes null and void at that point? Does that put the seller in some sort of?
Disadvantage.
Lead to disadvantage for the buyer.
Well, actually, there's some, you know, without getting into too many details, there's some advantages to actually being incorporated into a city. For one thing, if you have a lagoon and water well, if you're in the county, you are required to do a lagoon and water well inspection prior to selling your property. We have no such provisions in the city. So if we annex you and you have a lagoon and water well, you are not required to inspect it prior to selling that property. That saves you possibly the $10,000 just there for having to bring it up to code. So you're actually able to sell your property as is without any prior lagoon and water well inspection. In the county, you are required to inspect it prior to sale. So that actually is a benefit that's given over to the property owners if they choose to incorporate. But as mentioned, there are certain benefits that can be weighed, pros and cons. These are all discussions that some may feel is not that relevant, some feel it is relevant. It just depends on the property owners and what they feel they would want to see. And technically, I mean, each annexation could be drafted independent of the other one. So somebody could say, we want additional XYZ. That could be considered. And then somebody else could say, well, I want XYZ over here, ABC, and we could consider that as well. Each annexation petition and agreement can be drafted independent of the other one.
I guess my concern is, say 750, South Hawkins Lane sells their house. And the new people come in and if we say the contract's null and void, now they have additional city taxes and they want water and sewer. So now water, we're faced with putting in water and sewer. The new people are faced with extra taxes at the city with adding in basically the city's bill levy. And so does that hinder the house sale because of that? Or does that put extra burden on the city to do, to meet city requirements for being in the city?
That's, that's a very good question. And that's, that's a possibility that we'd have to look at, especially legally speaking.
Yes.
I mean, that would be something the council would have to look at. I don't know if necessarily, like I said, it would inhibit the sale. It's honestly, it could be beneficial simply because they don't have to do a lagoon and water well inspection. But there is that possibility of having a tax increase. I, last time I ran the numbers of tax increase, it was possible that each individual one was something about $15, $20 extra per month. So the tax increase wasn't like $300 per month. You know, it varied depending on the property. Obviously, this one over here on the west side is a large property and it could potentially be assessed higher. So there might be more of an impact on that one. But as mentioned, it's going to be a negligible impact. But if mentioned, we can waive that for the property owners. But legally speaking, we would have to address that with council. If we can say this is going to run afresh the property in perpetuity or for 10 years regardless of itself, that's something that we would have to look into.
So how would we manage the county property tax increases? People who live in the county, their property taxes over year over year will still probably increase. How are we going to manage that?
Yeah, that's, that's something we would have to look at with.
Wouldn't we just be neutralizing the, basically their taxes are the same entities that they pay taxes to now are going to stay there just like mine do. But we're basically going to say you don't have to pay city taxes. Is that what we're doing?
Well, we would lock it in at the county rate, correct?
No, we would lock it in probably at whatever the township rate is.
Oh, the township rate.
Right.
Okay, so what is.
Ryan probably speaks to this better than I can.
I mean, we can't do anything with regard to the county.
Right, yeah, that's, that's going to go wherever those go.
But if the township rate increases, are we going to?
If they're annexed in the city, they will not pay a township rate anymore. So we would basically lock in their, what they will pay to the city will be what they were paying to the township.
Forever.
So if it was, I don't know what the number is, but if it was $10,000, they'd be paying to the city.
Forever.
For whatever the agreement says.
That would be a heck of a deal because then you're locking the property taxes.
You're locking the, you're locking the mill rate, not the assessment. So assessment, you're going to pay more, but the mill rate itself would be locked.
Yeah, because your property taxes.
Staff would probably recommend either, probably to, that would expire when the property sells next. So the next owner will go back on regular city tax rate. But for the purposes of annexing into the city, we would lock it in so they're not having any burden to be annexed in. But we, we, it's probably not a good idea. And again, I would refer to our legal representatives on this.
So if all three concur to this, what if one backs out? Are they all three?
We need all three of them to do it.
All three of them would be required to do?
Yeah.
We need all three, 100%.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
If I could interject, one other thing is, I think in the past, there's been discussions about paving and speed on this road. And so, you know, that, that is a concern to consider not only for the board and the, and the residents there, you know, is how, how would the city control speed if, if paving it did increase the speeds possibly? And, and quite honestly, you know, everybody throws up the possibility of a speed bump where we don't put speed bumps on public roads. So it would have to be an enforcement procedure. But paving, you know, in that respect sometime is a, is a negative in that it could increase the speeds perhaps. But I'm all for, yes, seeing an existing gravel street paved because it, you know, it, you don't have dust problems and that sort of thing. But I know that has come up in the past is that, what's that going to do to speed? So anyway, something to consider.
Do you have anything on that?
Initially, what I could recommend if they do pave it, something that does affect traffic is having a speed limit sign there that is powered by solar panels that displays the speed. And it flashes an indicator when a certain threshold speed is pressed or breached. Little interaction with the traffic.
Public works, what do you?
We could do that with the reason.
Yeah. What about one of those things we're putting in? Takes pictures of your tag?
That's a closed up area. We don't even, that's included in this already.
And a couple of.
Thanks for complicating a little bit.
Drive.
Well, we just approved, we just approved that a couple of meetings ago.
Adding that's the control of sorts.
Yep.
And is, what's, would the posted speed be 30? I think that's, that's.
20, 25.
So it would be 30. 30.
Is it, well.
What is it?
20.
Whatever people drag down.
Is posted county right now?
It's posted 20 on the road.
Okay.
Can we grandfather that in?
Would you say would that change?
How that works with it being a county road, they've done their studies and made it 20. I don't know why we couldn't make it 20.
And it's leading into a business district, so.
Yeah.
You would prefer it to be 20? Yes. I guess for the sake of not putting the neighbors on the spot, could you reach out? What's a reasonable time to, I know you guys want to think about it too. What's a reasonable time? I mean, end of this week? I don't know if you guys want to have, talk to your legal counsel if anything or?
I don't think we're prepared to make any commitment towards this to anybody.
Invert.
We have the property owner that's not. Yes, definitely.
She's supposed to leave email. Was it, was there anyone here? The property owner on the east side? This way.
That's going to let.
Maybe a little weird.
I just want to know how 715 keeps their pool clean with all the dirt.
We brush it a lot.
Well, I guess my guys, in order for us to get an answer and communicate, you know, reach out at the end of the week, have them think about it, is that fair?
You can reach out, but I'm, I mean, I'm just not at this point going to give you any definitive answer.
Right. When, well, and I kind of think we need to, you know, it, we kind of need to say, are we all in agreement with the taxes issue, the lagoon issue? You know, all of those things so they know what they're actually agreeing to before they can even say.
Do we have an issue with freezing them?
Locking it?
Locking taxes? Letting them keep their.
I feel like if it was my property, that's what I'd want.
Yeah, no, I agree.
Right, so.
Well, and I think that only makes sense. I mean, us paving this road is only going to help the city look better. It's going to help with maintenance and all that. So I think it's only fair, you know. I would guess these homes were, at least a few of you, I would assume have owned the property longer than Tenganika. Maybe.
Well, 700 has.
Yeah, okay, so. So I know this is, this is a big ask in many different ways. But I think it would be great for the properties.
Because where does the paving stop?
Yeah.
Would it be all the way to the beginning of?
Well, to the gate, wasn't it?
Yeah, for sure. So this portion, obviously, right here, we could pave, well, this is what we want to. But this portion right here, this is the part that's not in the city.
But then that portion between, the bottom portion between there and so that is.
So here's the gate right here.
Right.
This would all get paved all the way.
And on the south side of the gate, is that already paved?
That's already paved.
Okay.
You, once you cross the gate over here, if this part's paved down there. This part over here is dirt and it goes all the way up.
So then that property owner down there, like right under 750?
They're already in the city.
We have to talk to them.
They're already in the city. Okay, yeah.
Sure. I know we've talked about this a while, but how many more scenarios in this city are?
Scenario being what exactly?
What has potentially come up again? Because we're said to president, so.
We have any other properties like this?
Are there any more scenarios like this around here where we're going to be entertaining?
We have three random lots in the middle of the.
There are a couple of... There's maybe a couple of properties that are not in the city limits. They're surrounded by the city. But the one that I'm thinking of in particular is already paved and already has city sewer and city water. It's just not in the city limits. So I don't know how much...
Well, you look at the Leo addition.
Yeah.
Leo Street, I mean, it's ran by the city of Goddard, but they live in the camp.
That's very little.
Yeah.
South of the...
And so, that's a, that's a, I guess, example, but we're not looking to pave Leo Street.
Probably not. We'd have to offset the rural water district meters. There's different situations for every different property. There's nothing that's actually going to be like a static copy and paste. Leo's got rural water district, and typically, we have to offset customers for rural water district, and there's twenty of them. That's a hundred thousand dollars, five thousand per meter. So that's already, that's a pretty expensive, steep cost that we'd have to incur if we didn't remade over some of the old circle. There is, like I said, one property that's already paved, that's off of Goddard Road. It's already got city sewer, city water, and it's paved, it's just not on city limits. This one's a little bit more unique, because you have three property owners, but then you have the dirt roads. The question of, we're trying to tackle this portion here with these three property owners. Every situation's different. It's not unprecedented that we have an annexation agreement that gives people extra provisions. We've actually done that on one hundred ninety-nine across from Public Works. Their building, we've annexed those properties before with special provisions. It's not uncommon, so it's just every annexation agreement can be tailored special. It's a negotiation.
So I guess, can we just direct you to go to the homeowners with...
You can directly do whatever you guys want to do.
Frozen taxes, or how would that work? They can keep their lagoons. We prefer they keep their lagoons. Speed limit stays twenty. What were our other thoughts? And then see what their response is, and if they have like, well, we'd like this, we'd like that, and then it comes back to us, and then we say, "Yeah, cool," or "Well, we need to do this." Is that how we proceed with this?
Absolutely, yeah. It's just, it'd be up to them to, basically, you're giving me authority to represent the city in terms of the negotiation with the property owners. And then, of course, we would include Matt Lawn, Terry Lamond, Ryan Peck, Angus Beadley, Brooke Vandenberg and stuff, for all the development processes and legal considerations and engineering requirements and anything else that might happen with that regard. And then they would give feedback in terms of, well, we want to see this. And like I said, each annexation agreement is a private negotiation between us and the property owners. So if they say they want to see something different than their neighbor, that's fine. They'll just be drafted in that petition for annexation, and they can lay out whatever they want. And we could say, hey, this is what they said they would like to see, and it's a petition, and so we bring it before you, and you could say, we don't want it or we do want it. And you can accept it as you, as you will.
Are we good at freezing everything?
Freezing property taxes, not assessing, basically, the township rate would turn into what their city rate is for these three houses, the mill levy, and...
And not being assessed. So the negotiation would be transparent between all three owners?
Yeah, absolutely.
They all see what each other do.
Oh, yeah, for sure. There's nothing, they can talk, they're going to talk anyway, it doesn't matter. They can all congregate, talk about, you got this, I got this.
I don't want to, I don't want to create a Hatfield McCoy situation.
No, no, they'll be well aware. I mean, well, simply, I'll even volunteer, like, this is what they said they want to see. Is this what you want to see, you know, and they'll say, like, I want to see that, plus more, or less, or, you know, the same.
I can get you a visit from the Easter Bunny.
Mr. Mayor, yes, I'm good with that.
Yeah, I'm good with that, yeah.
I want to, I don't know if we need a formal vote, but can we do just a roll call vote saying, yes, that's okay? Because I would like everybody to...
We're voting on whether we're okay with...
We're okay with freezing, we're okay with freezing the property taxes?
Sure.
At the township rate?
Sure.
We're not going to assess the neighbors and the cost of the road, okay? We won't provide any water, and so we won't require them to be on city water and stuff.
Sure.
And that's it.
As far as, I guess my only question to you guys then, would not necessarily be any sort of agreement, but that discussion or feedback to MICA. Is there a certain timeline that you guys are comfortable saying, yeah, this is kind of how we're feeling, just so we have an update, you know what I mean?
Not until we all meet.
Do you have any idea when you guys will try to do that?
We'll try to do it as soon as we can.
Okay, I'm just, just curious, yeah.
Because what we're trying to do is tie this in with some of the other road repairs we're doing. And if we get them all together, then we get a better interest rate, so that saves the taxpayers at large money, and then we can get them all done. But I do understand that.
We don't want to rush you.
Yeah, you guys need to take your time and look at all the aspects and be able to decide what you want.
And you have all the contact information?
No, I don't. I'm going to have to get some.
Don't leave before MICA. All right, so can I have a motion for that?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Aubrey.
Second.
Second by Sarah. Like a roll call vote.
Councilmember Fish.
Yes.
Councilmember Liam.
Yes.
Mayor Larkin.
Yes.
Councilmember Trailer.
Yes.
Councilmember Collins.
Yes.
Thank you very much. This is about item H. four. This is a resolution authorizing the sale of general obligation temporary note series twenty twenty-three dash three for Arbor Creek Phase Three. Whoops. So, quick background, Arbor Creek Phase Three petitions for financing improvements were considered on March twentieth, twenty twenty-three after being reviewed. It was determined that approved the petition for net financing improvements for Arbor Creek Phase Threes for step one. After determined that the developer wanted to move forward immediately with building Phase Three, Bond Council drafted a resolution offering the sale of notes, which are being presented today, which is step two. The temporary notes cover the costs for construction for engineering services with the contracted engineering firm selecting by the developer. The city council will need to approve the engineering service agreements, which are called ESA contracts. The resolution authorizes the sale of GO temporary notes with improvements approved by the following resolutions. Resolution twenty-three sixteen for Arbor Creek Phase Three water distribution. Resolution twenty-three seventeen Arbor Creek Phase Three water main distribution. Resolution twenty-three eighteen Arbor Creek Phase Three sand face sewer improvements. Resolution twenty-three nineteen Arbor Creek Phase Three paving improvements. Resolution twenty-three twenty Arbor Creek Phase Three paving collector. Resolution twenty-three twenty-one Arbor Creek Phase Three grading range. After adoption of this resolution offering for sale, the notes will be, will proceed. On April seventeen, twenty twenty-three, Steeple Nichols and Co., the city's financial advisor, opened bids for the notes and checked them for accuracy. After Steeple receives bid, they will present the results of the sale recommended to city council, accept the bids. Lowest true interest cost EICN dot resolution proven issuance of notes will be step three. I'm going to hand it over to Bond Counselor this moment.
Financial advisor. Bond, Bond Counselor's the attorney. Oh, sorry. Call me an attorney. No offense, right. Mayor and Counsel, Brett Shoverin, Steeple Nichols and Company, city's financial advisor. This is a process you've done many, many times when you're, when developers are petitioning for improvements for residential neighborhoods. We issue temporary notes to temporarily finance the infrastructure improvements, usually water, sewer, paving, grading, stormwater, sewer, things like that. And so this is no different. The temporary note amount is estimated at one million four hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. We have set note maturity date on December first of twenty twenty-six, right around three and a half years from now. Pretty typical with other temporary note financings. We usually give them about three years to build the projects, build some homes, try and sell some lots. And then about a half a year later, we issue GO bonds to permanently finance those improvements and assess the payments to those property owners. As I said, the financing includes the project costs. That's the cost of the construction. It includes cost of issuance, which are like closing costs, attorney fees, financial advisor fees, CUSIP Bureau for identification numbers on the notes, Attorney General's Office to approve the transcript, as well as some note printing fees and some miscellaneous. And also capitalize interest to make interest payments during construction. Capitalized interest, we're basically borrowing the amount that we're going to pay in interest to the note holder. And that way, the city at large doesn't have to come up with money to make the interest payments during the construction. That's pretty typical. And then whenever we issue the bonds and do the special assessment proceedings, the cost of the notes, including that temporary note interest and capitalized interest, is assessed back to the property owners. We are scheduled to close this issue. As MICA stated, I think it was on the last slide, we're planning to sell the temporary notes competitively at your next meeting, or the morning of your next meeting on the seventeenth, and we're scheduled to close on May third, which is when funds will be available for the project. That will allow for temporary notes, the cost to be paid by the temporary note proceeds to the approved contractors' construction costs and any engineering fees. As stated earlier, in twenty twenty-six, prior to the maturity of the notes, we will market temporary, or we will market general obligation bonds, twenty-year bonds, to be, to retire the temporary notes, and the bond payments will be paid via special assessments to the property owners benefiting from the improvements. Engineering service agreements, or ESA, is an agreement between the city and the engineering firm hired by the developer to provide engineering services for the project, and I think that is part of this, part of this motion as well. As far as financial, this issuance complies with the adopted resolutions twenty-three dash sixteen through twenty-three dash twenty-one. As described earlier, the cost of the improvements will be financed by the special assessment statute, KSA twelve dash six A oh one. Oh one, that's typo. That's SEC through the special assessment process. The proposed documents have been reviewed by your Bond Counsel, Kevin Cowan of Gilmore and Bell, and City Attorney Ryan Peck, and they're approved to form. It is recommended, actually, are there any questions before we do that? Most of you have done it before. There are a couple new members that, you saw the tail end of the last one, and now you're seeing the beginning part, so it'll all come together. If there's no questions, it's recommended to the city council to adopt the proposed resolution authorizing the offering for sale of general obligation temporary notes series twenty twenty-three dash three for improvements to Arbor Creek Phase Three, and approve the proposed engineering services agreements. And that is a voice vote. Unless you have any questions for myself or Penn and Cowan, with Gilmore and Bell, your bond councils here as well, if you have any legal questions.
Is this what was discussed in the thing that I started on, just to clarify? I was going to say, I'm pretty sure, okay, so I've asked all the questions. I had the opportunity to sit in MICA's office while they were all meeting about this, this last week. So I already asked all my stupid, trying to learn what's going on questions.
It's not stupid. Common curse, who's never done this before.
Yeah, yeah.
I think you should wear that bunny seat once in a while.
You want me to wear it to meetings?
I want you to show up at my sister's house and scare the crap out of her, because they hate the Easter Bunny.
Is there a hair?
Yeah. I'd like to bring something up I just noticed here, and I don't mean to throw a wrench in the mechanics, and maybe Ryan can speak to this. But I just noticed in a section on the engineering services contract, there is a limitation of liability of the engineer. And I guess I would just like to make sure that, you know, they provide insurance, professional errors and omissions insurance, but there's a limitation of liability clause in there, and I would like, Ryan, he may not have an opportunity to be comfortable with that before you give final proof. Because what that does is that, you know, let's say the engineer makes a mistake or something, it limits his liability. And that sometimes is a controversial subject. If you're, if Ryan's fine with it, great. I just want you all to be aware of that.
Are they looking at K?
Yes. They limit the liability of the engineer, and I know we haven't been...
Is this, this phase has that detention clause, right?
Yeah, there it is.
Uh, no, this is, no, this is another phase. This is phase three.
Is that phase two?
That's Arbor Creek second.
Are what the MJ's detention clause?
I don't know, Ryan, if, what if that, you know, if that then means their liability, because I think they're providing a million dollar liability, or errors and omissions insurance. But does that limitation of liability then restrict that? You know, and I'm not saying anything would happen, but I just would want to make sure the city is aware of that and...
If you guys need more time, we could just approve it for just the resolution.
I hate to delete, yeah, absolutely.
We can approve it just the resolutions and not approve the ESA until there's been time to vet the ESA. Because we're not paying for the engineering services until we get the temporary notes funds anyway, so we could reconsider the ESA at the next city council meeting if you prefer for more legal review. You would just approve the petitions and not the ESA.
Yeah, I'm fine with that, and I apologize. I just happened to be scrolling through that and saw that in there, and I, I don't know what implications that has or not, but...
I'd like you for bringing that up.
Your attorney, that, red way in on that when he has a chance.
To give Ryan some more time to read it over and digest it, how about we do MICA's suggestion?
Yeah, I think you're good going out and going ahead and getting a temporary note. Get that in process.
Yes. Perfect. I'll make a motion to MICA. MICA's...
MICA's suggestion. Second.
Motion by Brett, second by Sarah. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay.
Thank you.
I'll let Penn case you know that we're reviewing the ESA a little bit further. This is item H. five. This is a joint workshop with Planning Commission City Council. So on occasion, it is beneficial for the Planning Commission City Council to meet collectively, discuss topics pertaining to growth and development of the city. These meetings will allow opinions and ideas to be shared openly, so that topics that tend to surface repeatedly can be vetted during the open meeting with candid conversation and dialogue. City staff will provide the questions to facilitate discussion. A joint workshop will have discussion topics to help guide the conversation. Comments will be recorded, and any policy recommendation will be reserved at a later date for consideration and approval. So the city council is considering if they want to have a joint workshop with the Planning Commission. This is a discussion item. Any decisions may relate to the Planning Commission. Financially, none. There's no publication requirements, anything of nature. There's no legal consideration. This is just simply, if you guys want to meet with the Planning Commission, how do you want to meet with the Planning Commission, or do you not want to meet with the Planning Commission at all? So the recommendation is to either choose to not have a joint workshop. You can choose to have the city council host the Planning Commission during a regular city council meeting. You can choose to have the Planning Commission host the city council during a regular Planning Commission meeting. You can choose to have a special meeting outside a regular meeting, either the Planning Commission or city council. I did call some of the Planning Commissioners to kind of see what they wanted to see, and most of them said they'd rather either meet on a Planning Commission day or city council day. They didn't really have an opinion one way or another, so they didn't want to meet outside of Monday. They wanted to meet on Monday.
And my thinking is, they're volunteers. Let's not make them come out an extra night. I prefer to do it on a Planning Commission night. I know it's an extra night for us, but again, they're volunteers.
True.
So I hate to make them come an extra time. I can't do the next week, but I can do the eighth.
You can do eight. But you're reviewing May.
May, yeah. Yeah, look at your sketches. I can do May eights. I'll be, I won't be at the next two city council meetings by then. Oh, that's why.
It's...
Yep. The eighth is out.
We at least need to have all the council at that meeting. That's my only, for sure, one thing that I...
Do we push to June?
Everybody on board.
Yeah, one.
I guess the question is, do we have any big, like, the whole thought behind this was, all of us kind of know where we all stand, kind of how we want to move forward with the city. Do we have anything big coming? Down between now and June?
I showed up to one of the council meetings, I think you were chairing it. Was that just this last one?
Yes, that was last meeting.
Okay. And there was two questions that came up, as special zoning for old Harder Goddard that pertains to the smaller lots. You know, we ran into the zoning with duplex lot that couldn't, we could have a duplex, but we couldn't have a single-family home, right? Because our city doesn't allow a single-family home to be on one of the smaller Goddard lots.
That are plotted.
Her back.
A hundred years ago.
And so, I guess one of the top, one of the topics needs to be, do we pretty much make a new city code for, per se, old Goddard, right? That has the old lots, the smaller, skinnier, longer lots. Is that something, I think that's probably the ideal, but we need to have that conversation with Planning Commission. And I think one of the other topics is the duplex topic in general. Seems like we went back and forth, and the consistency from the city hasn't been there as far as, do we want to do a percentage of duplexes when it comes to a new development? What do we want to do? What does the Planning Commission want to do? What does the city council want to do? So we can be more consistent on our decisions coming out of city hall here. And we just need to have that conversation, I think. And so, I think those would be the two main ones. Is there anything else, you think?
That was, that was the majority of the, the biggest ones, for sure.
May twenty-second?
In what day of the week?
Monday.
Is that our Monday? I know, is that our Monday or their Monday, or nobody's Monday?
May twenty-second is the meeting, right?
No, that would be, no, it's the second Monday of every month is Planning Commission. And they only need one thing.
Oh, once a month?
That's right. So May, every Planning Commission, and then you'd have to go to June or another month, or July.
June. So what, that second?
I mean, I guess we could go...
The twelve?
May fifteenth, but then that makes, Planning Commission comes...
To a special meeting.
To our meeting.
I guess there's...
Or we could do June twelfth.
We could do June, and maybe, MICA, you could be a...
No.
Oh. Did you get your wife's birthday wrong?
That's my damn birthday, that's what it is.
Oh. Still can't miss that. I mean, I guess, could we do it in June? What day in June?
Worked.
What day is their meeting?
Their meeting's the 12th.
Okay. How about we do that? How about we do June 12th, and then the next Planning Commission meeting, how about you inform them that that's what we want to do and the topics that we want to talk about, so they can brew it over, talk about it maybe in the meeting a little bit, think about maybe a percentage, so we're not all just going in there, coming up with decisions or what we want to do. You guys have time to think about it. Is that fair? Okay. So what was the idea? We want to have this on regular occurrence, or is it once a quarter?
I, I mean, I think there had been some discussion previously. Some people had said that we need to wait until after the next election. That's, I mean, that's seven months. I think bi-yearly, like every six months. Realistically, the council and the commission need to be on the same page. They need to be having conversations, and I think we, you know, Larkin went to the last one, but as far as I understand, the council historically hasn't shown up to their meetings, and a lot of times, other than, I see you at pretty much every meeting, but he kind of represents the commission at all of their meetings. So we have to figure out a way to bridge that. That's just kind of my thoughts. So I think meeting once a year isn't enough if you want to keep, I mean, let's be honest, we've seen how much can change in six months' time, so...
Twice a year, I mean, you can do it once a quarter. I don't, I don't particularly care on the consistency. It's, I think, it's important to at least be on the same page. That's, that's, right now, I think, we're playing hot potato a lot on a lot of things, and that's not good. And so maybe it's something we plan twice a year, but if we feel like we need to sit down and have a come and use meeting, we do that, and we plan a special one if we feel it's not necessary. Well, yeah, so transparency is important, so it's, communication is important as well. How does that look? I don't know what I'm trying to say. To keep the two... Let me rethink that. Mr. Dory? We all, I mean, City Hall in general needs to be on the same page. We can have differences in opinion and discussions, but when it comes to, one of the problems I've seen is we have one development that is very similar to the next development, but we wrote down one because it has duplexes, but we don't vote down the other because it has duplexes, or we change it. We at least need to have consistency at the City Hall. I guess, I guess the thought I'm trying to get to is that we start, I mean, I'm not disagreeing at all. I think we need to have that, that meeting, right? I don't want to get the persona of that, you know, okay, now this is a standard operation, then it doesn't change over time because of, right? I still think it needs to be fresh ideas need to be brought forward, and without our initial input on that, right? Because situations change, developments change, you know, you know, over time, so each of our union. So if we come in and say, we're always going to say this and that, that's what I want to get away from, because each situation's going to be unique.
Yeah, we can't cookie cutter, we can't cookie cutter everything. We have to be able to...
I just didn't want to say that President's going, well, y'all don't bring something to us because we're going to say no. You know what I mean?
For sure.
I don't want, I don't want to start that precedent. We know they're going to deny us on this thing. You know what I mean? So, does that make sense? But I mean, I totally agree. We need, definitely need to have those conversations, but I still want it to be a predictable thing. We're not even going to think about this because we know how they're going to vote, because it's not true.
Right, sure.
Okay. Well, are we good?
June 12th.
June 12th.
Got it, that's good.
All right.
It's in the book.
Okay.
Can we get a motion a second on that?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Keaton?
Second.
Second by Sarah. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much.
Seven P. A. Right?
Hold on, I thought you said 6.
I got it, it's seven P. A.
Henley, I'll have a doubleheader that night, watch.
Mayor of City Council, item H.6 is to consider audio improvements for the City Council room. In May 2022, ceiling microphones and USB mixer were installed by Hops Sound for live streaming the City Council and Planning Commission meetings, and during the February 26, 2023 City Council meeting, there were complaints to City Council members, and presenters at the meeting could not be heard from the back of the City Council room. Staff is directed to see proposals for microphones and speakers to improve the audio in the council room. Staff received five bids from three providers, and all recommended replacing these current speakers that are back here in the back of the room. All bids were, also included a listening device at the back of the room for people that have communication disabilities, which fall in line with ADA requirements for effective communication. We received the following bids. Hops Sound was $8,009.81. Heartland Audio Visual, $12,001.21. Relevant audio and visual presented two, one for wired and one for wireless, which, for $22,869 and $29,175. At this time, staff believes that just the basic audio system will be sufficient to fill our current needs, and we recommend that you award the bid to Hops Sound for an amount not to exceed $8,981, to be allocated to account 10, 150, 6140, which is the general fund. City Hall repair and maintenance building, legal as approved, as to form, and if you have any questions, I'll try and answer that.
I want you to just all get those loudspeakers. They're probably only in the buzzer.
They brought up an issue earlier. These are wired for mics here, so what happened to that?
So their proposal would be to the mics that would actually be inserted in there, either that or the wires would actually go in there.
Don't remember they have the black?
We revolved the building.
I don't know what happened to the question.
Mixer board got taken out, so it was, there was nothing to them, so that we just took them off.
Oh, okay. Oh, and we did the revolting, okay.
Just include the podium too, right?
This would include a wireless, yes, for the podium.
Okay. Oh, it'll be wireless?
The podium.
At the podium.
Okay.
And the mics will cover here, staff.
Are we going to have a button? I could turn it off so I don't take a tuckin'.
I believe most of them did have that proposal, switching on.
Do I have the power to turn them off? Okay, do you guys have any questions? No?
I'm assuming, just to clarify, seven, there's seven on that commission?
Yes.
Okay, I'm just making sure that we have enough. I've been watching their meetings, but I never actually counted. I just knew there was a lot.
Even if there's more, they're close enough together that there's plenty of microphone coverage.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure.
Now, I guess one thing, when they do install it, will someone be here to make sure that, I guess, how on Facebook, when we're live streaming it, are we going to make sure it's not echoing on Facebook somehow, screwing it up? I guess just make sure that...
It's going to be difficult to minimize reverb. It's going to be coming through a little bit on Facebook.
It is.
Yeah, we're going to have to try to mess with the soundboard to try to mitigate that, but it's going to be impossible to remove it completely. There's going to be some reverb.
All right.
But they'll, they're going to install it and try to minimize.
Okay.
Do you have any idea on a timeline? Like, if we approve this tonight, do you have any idea when that would actually happen?
I don't know for sure. I know that the, that most all of them were going for this, the speakers that did fit in to those slots because they were more readily available than having wireless.
Is there a percent down payment upfront, or is it the full?
No, it'd be the full amount.
Do I have a motion?
So motion.
Motion by Sarah.
Second.
Second by Brent. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. Okay. Keaton, what do you got?
All right, I made sure to write down a couple different people. First, thank you to the Lions Club. I think I saw, most of us were able to make it out to the car show this weekend. Y'all did an incredible job. I think everybody had a great time. I got a sunburn that is going to hurt for a few more days, but that's all right. Also, thank you to the Main Street businesses that were all there. I know I got to pop in. We talked a little bit, popped in, Pasha Petit was open, went in there and grabbed some brownies and went and talked to Bree over at Wall of Denim. So it was awesome to see them open. I also wanted to thank Lindy Hathaway. She is a photographer whose son goes to Eisenhower, and she came out and took pictures of the entire event for free, and so I think that she might have taken my wonderful new profile picture, but it was great to have her out there, and she did that just completely on her own time, so I wanted to make sure that I said a thank you to her. Also, while we were there, they had a lot of great vendors, and Angie and I both got the opportunity to talk to a lot of them about the upcoming Main Street market, and so, super excited. I think it was, I don't know an official number of how many were out there. There had to be like 20.
It was like 30.
There was 30? Yeah, there was a lot of people, so, and I think we got great feedback as far as the people that I talked to, they seemed excited about it, so I'm looking forward to what we're going to be able to build off of the Lions Club, and I think it's just a testament to what happens when all the different moving parts in Goddard start to all work together. Great things start to happen quick, and so thank you guys for, for that and for, also just for allowing us to be there. Yeah, was there, there was one other thing. I don't remember what it was, so, I don't know, I'll figure it out later. But thank you guys so much for being here tonight. It's always great to see members of our community come and just be a part of this as we move forward. So that's all. Thanks.
Sarah?
Um, I want to thank, sorry, I was about to sneeze. I want to thank the Lions Club for all your hard work. That's awesome that we had such a great turnout at the car show. Bringing things to Goddard Main Street is a good thing, and we need to keep doing it. I'm glad that the Easter egg hunt was too big of a success. I'm sad that I had to miss it. My daughter had a softball commitment that we had to be at, so hopefully next year. And like you said, Easter moves, so the hunt, probably won't coordinate with that, but that might be better. So, two events is always better than one, right? So, yeah, if, I, I know the homeowners have left, but if any of the Hawkins Lane homeowners, if you watch this and you want to reach out to me, please do with any questions or concerns you have, because we do want, or I at least, want to do what is best for you guys, because that's your property and you've lived there, and we want to work with you and make everything good for everybody, I should say. So, that's all I got.
Aubrey?
I want to know why Keaton goes first, because you can't follow him.
I'll change that up.
One of these days, I'm going to pull the chair up from under him before he sits down.
I got an idea.
So this is why we need those mics. We can hear what they're talking about down there.
You don't want to hear that. Yeah, same thing, Lions Club. Enjoy it. I want to see a lot more of this like that.
You know what I told him is I, I told him, I said, we're going to go to an Albany shop and find some bunny ears so we can wear them next time. That's what I said. Also, Mr. Funky mentioned he's going to have surgery tomorrow?
Yeah.
So I hope that he has a good surgery. He stepped out so fast, I wasn't able to tell him. I'm sure his, his hands hurting, so if you can at least tell him for me, please. And yes, the car show was awesome. I had a good time.
Did you get a word due?
Huh? I did? I did! Oh, I want a big old bucket of clean supplies, remember?
Yeah.
Yeah! I am.
Kind of sounds great.
I did, great. I'm not going to clean your guys' cars, though. But, oh, so I got, there is quite, Ace Hardware back there, the librarians right there, lookie there, the Planning Commission, everybody's here tonight. Chamber, there we go. Anyway, thank you.
Well, I'm going to ditto what everybody else said. Thank you, Lions Club. You guys did an amazing job. I can't, I can't say anymore how awesome you got. It was, it was truly impressive, and I think that's a sentiment on how our community is actually doing. I mean, wanting to be involved, people wanting to show up, and I think that was just absolutely awesome. So it was a good problem to have. The Easter didn't work out so well, but that was a good problem to have, so you guys will get a word down next year on positive. I got four things. Community center improvements, the quotes.
We've got almost everything. Wait for us to finish the floor, and then we'll get those compiled, talk to finance, and we'll bring to council.
Okay. I was told earlier that it might be a good opportunity for the community, so we might want to pick and choose out of those quotes. Might be a good opportunity for the community to come in and maybe be involved in helping paint or rip off some of that old wood siding or whatever, wood painting. Might be, we designate like one day, Amanda brought that up to me earlier, that we focus that to be the day that we rip it off, and a good bonding moment for the rest of the community. So we'll get the quotes, but then we'll kind of figure out a plan from there and see what we can do.
Yeah.
Second, Chamber videos. I think the first video was awesome. I think it was good. Matt is going to be a superstar. I think it worked out pretty good. Those videos are intended to be very informative for the community to know what the city's doing, to be more transparent, and to give a little bit more description on what each department does, and not just the city, but what else is going on in the city. I know that we're going to do interviews with the Chamber and hopefully other organizations in the city, so I think that'll be very good and informative for the rest of the community. Has each department had been accounted for in video yet? I think we've done Matt, we've done Brooke, we've done Angie, we've done you, which fit Keaton.
Yep.
And Micah.
And Micah. So we're going to do, we're going to do, Chief?
Chief is excited.
We'll have to get different lighting for his forehead.
And then, and then, and then, who are we sticking you with?
Terry.
Terry.
He's going to go easy on me.
Oh, she's going to, you.
Yeah, that's for sure.
Okay. And so, and then, I don't want to stop there. I want to keep rolling that, and Angie is doing such a great job. You put a lot of work into it, so I'm looking forward to seeing what you can do. Thank you so much, Angie. Our bond, Matt, our, our infrastructure bond, how are we doing on that? Have, is there any progress?
Well, we need to get figured out what we're doing if we're including this project.
Hawkins?
Okay. So, I mean, otherwise, honestly, why we can't move forward with it, just if we don't end up doing it, we just pay that back when we retire from that, so.
Okay. Okay.
We have, we have, we have good estimates, I believe, for all three projects, so we're, you know, we know without what, you know, we're going to work within the, remember we talked about, so we're good to go.
Okay. And then my last thing, and I don't expect it to be done right now, but I did bring it up to Matt earlier, is right now, we're not banking with financial institution here in Goddard. We're banking outside, and I don't particularly know who we should go with. We should definitely open it out to banks, but...
The reason we're not banking with institution Goddard, because we were, they asked us to reduce our, our deposit there to below where we would have been able to operate effectively. And that, we've had that issue with two institutions in town in the past, and so that's why we moved, or we did. However, I've been told by at least one that they will be able to, because in order, in order to have public funds in a bank, it's not like you or me where we just get the $250,000 FDIC. City, all of our funds have to be, you know, collateralized and protected back with securities that the bank has to issue in some instances. At one point, we're not willing to do that. We have considerable, considerably more money... And sometimes, at one point, we're not willing to do that. We have considerable, considerably more money in our account right now because of all the development we've had. We have a lot of temped-up money in place, and it's gonna take an institution that's capable of collateralizing all of that. So, what we'll do is, we will do an RFP for banking services like we did, I wanna say it was like 2014 or something like that, I can't remember exactly. But we'll do an RFP for banking services. We'll get quotes from the local banks if they're willing to bid on it. And we'll get quotes from, you know, other institutions in the Wichita Metro. Who are, and, but one of the requirements is gonna be that to collateralize 100% of our funds on deposit.
Well, it would, it would be nice to see Goddard's money in Goddard. So, hopefully, we can get that done and have a bank that will work with us.
Well, this is gonna be an opportunity to do some other things, too, to get some other services in place that would improve efficiency at City Hall, so.
Well, that's all I have. I know we have an executive session. Do I have a motion to move into the executive session?
Make a motion to recess into executive session under KS 875-431-91 and 3 to discuss personnel matters and contract negotiations involving non-elected personnel to include the city attorney, community development director, and the city clerk. We will reconvene the open meeting in the city council chambers at...
Sarah, you have twenty minutes?
I need to alky them next to that. Okay, we're first gonna take a potty break, so it will be at 8:55.
Motion by Sarah.
Second.
Second by Keaton. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay.